Good evening, Bridgeport. Thank you for coming out tonight. What a wonderful crowd. Everyone looks beautiful, dressed very nice. Today is our Tuesday, May 13th meeting. It is 7:36. We are called to order. Please rise and fudge clack.
To the light of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Angela, roll call, please.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Toni Heil.
Here.
Sabah Al-Zayed.
I am here. Mr. Bello, are you?
Madam President, I had to note for the record that we were in executive session from approximately 7 o'clock to approximately 7:30 with regard to a personnel issue as well as real estate.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. First up here for council consideration, we have April 8th, 2025, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Hauck, a second for Mr. Shank. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have April 22nd, 2025, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Nolan, second for Ms. Hi. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have the announcement of our 2025 Dr. Vincent Scholarship Award winner. I believe that is either Keith or Toni. Correct? Toni, are you?
Thank you very much, President Al-Zayed. Today, we met to go over some many applicants for our 2025 scholarship, and thank you so much to the residents, the parents in Bridgeport for raising such great kids who challenged us to find the best applicants here because there are so many people who are deserving and have a bright future ahead of them. Our 2025 scholarship honoree is going to be Axel Juarez Hernandez. He's going to Westchester University, and we will recognize Axel at a future meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. This is a wonderful opportunity, and yeah, the kids are fantastic. It's a great part of the meetings every year that I enjoy a lot. So thanks for going through the process with them and for the committee. All right. Next up, we have a presentation of unit citations to our first responder partners for their aid during the fire on February 22nd, 2025.
Chief Wanzik, if you'd like to come to the podium.
Welcome. You look great.
The next 20 minutes will be Steve adjusting the microphone.
You know, I couldn't let it go, right? Well, thanks for having us. We're here tonight to recognize some of the first responders that responded to the Bridgeport Suites fire back in February. It was one of those calls that none of us want to show up at, but we did. We showed up with our mutual aid partners who are all here, or who are all here tonight. So just have a few words. So on February 22nd, at about 1:37 in the morning, the fire department, along with their mutual aid partners, responded to a building fire at 3:30, West Third Street, Bridgeport Suites. Upon arrival, as you guys have heard, the crews faced heavy fire in the first-floor apartment and heavy smoke throughout all six floors. As units arrived, and most of them are here today, so these are the guys and gals that helped us out that night. They were all assigned various assignments throughout the event, and they all handled their assignments very well. We had over 100 residents evacuated safely, and unfortunately, we had a few that were seriously injured but recouped and are doing well. So without the help of our people and our mutual aid partners, it would have turned out a lot worse. So we were pretty happy. So at this point, we would like to recognize our mutual aid departments with unit accommodations. And I'm going to announce them and then the representative from those different organizations. So the Department of Public Safety, these are our guys and gals up there at the dispatch center that are behind the scenes, prompting us, helping us through these events, and they're an integral part, but they never really get recognized. So we felt it was important to recognize them and present them with a unit citation. So if Brian McCown and his personnel can come up and accept the unit citation... I have a good bit of them, so bear with me. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
She's going to want the pictures. Go ahead, get in, get in, get in. Come on, this is your night. Stand. I'm going to be on the wall, I guess.
Look at me, I'm prettier.
Thanks, guys. The next group of individuals is the Montgomery County Emergency Management Team, Jake Fry. These guys, once again, after the event and during the event, actually were a good part of the operations. And these guys are the behind the scenes, so they're just as much of a part of the operations as the firefighters, the ambulance, police, so... Okay, Ken. Who's taking pictures, Hans? Turn around, we're going to take a picture. Get between the... Get out of the picture, Mike.
Wait a minute, you can't see Steve.
No, I wasn't getting in.
I'll just sneak in the back here. Wow, rocks, come on.
The next unit citation goes to Plymouth Community Ambulance Chief Tom Trujansky. His guys were great that night. They transported the victims and were standing by at the scene, and wow, he brought a lot of them.
There's a lot there.
These are some of the ladies and gentlemen that were there that evening, so... Nah, I don't do pictures. Now, I'm going to get into not a bolt, so not that these guys weren't, I'm going to get into the fire side of things. Our mutual aid partners from Norristown Fire Department in accepting that unit citation will be John Ramelord, Assistant Chief. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you.
She wants a picture.
I understand.
Look, we'll get in with you. Yeah, go ahead. Next is the Gladwin Fire Company Chief Blaine Leith. John, this is where you're supposed to stand. Thanks, buddy. Thanks, pal. She's going to want your picture.
That's right.
Nobody from Ridner here? Nobody from Ridner showed up? Okay, so... Next is the Upmurray Township Fire and Rescue Chief Jim Johnson. It's right there. Thank you. Chief?
Oh, thank you, sir.
She's going to want a picture. Thank you, thank you. Next is the King of Prussia Fire Company Deputy Chief Robert Small. Cupcake. Thank you. Thank you. She's going to want a picture. She wants a picture. Bobby, you're going to have to put your hat on because there's two bald guys up there with the reflections. Be three guys up there. Thank you. Next is the Swelan Fire Company Dennis Rangers. Ah, there he is. Next is Steve. She's going to want a picture. He knows. They got the message right now. Suesburg Fire Company Carl Farrell. Carl?
Thank you.
Get up here and give your... Carl, she wants your picture. My glasses. Next is the Country Hawk and Fire Department Tim Gunney. Did I say that, Tim? I did that for JJ because that's how he used to say it, right?
Good pair, right?
What's wrong with this one?
They just got talked into it.
Next is the Plymouth Fire Company John Drows. Thank you. Lower Providence Fire Company Jimmy Alexander. Oh, he did a shot there. Ah, he didn't. Jim? In front, you're going to take your picture. You're going to run out of film soon. Norton Fire Company James Fessler. How did that get messed up? Should have been giving him the right one. Oh, my God. I hope so. I don't need to take him out like you have him sit. And last but not least, our own two borough fire company, school fire company, and Bridgeport Fire Company number one. Where are you getting? Let's go. There you go, Michael. There you go. Get out there. She's going to want a picture. You're going to get this one. So we felt it was important to recognize these individual companies. These were the companies and individuals that responded out there that evening with us, and... Did I forget Jeffersonville? Got it? Still got it. Jeffersonville Fire Company. I apologize. Who was I getting? That's probably why I didn't have them. Okay, but they were... Once again, this was the group of ladies and gentlemen that were out there that evening, and not that we enjoyed it, but it's kind of proud to see this many people come out tonight for this event and that evening. I mean, if it wasn't for these mutual aid companies and partners that we have, I think the outcome would have been a lot worse. So I thank them. We have a couple more presentations we want to make, and then we're going to get out of here. So after the event, there were some things that happened that evening that individual members of the department, of various departments, came to me and suggested that we go a little bit farther with our recognitions for some of the events that happened that evening. So tonight, we want to present three Merit Awards and two Valor Awards for some of the actions that were taken that evening. So I'm just going to try to... My glasses back on. I'm going to try to read this real quick, make these presentations, and make it out of your hair. So during the operations, there were some rescues made. Some of the rescues were made via ground ladders where individual firefighters climbed ladders and took some residents out the ladders and down the ladders, which we felt met the requirements for a Merit Award. And two of those gentlemen are here tonight, and we'd like to present them with Merit Awards, Zach Santiago and Robert Small. He's younger than me, though. It'll work. She's going to want a picture. Yeah, with Steve. Kind of put the cart before the horse with this next one, but you'll understand it when I get to the final two awards. Also, that night during the operations on the first floor with the heavy smoke and heavy fire conditions, firefighter Justin Fosero came upon Deputy Chief Mike Gallagher and Battalion Chief Chris Gallagher, who were in the process of removing a victim and assisted with the removal of the victim, and we felt that this should be recognized. And this individual is here tonight, Justin Fosero, with a Merit Award. You think she wants a picture? And then finally, the last two we're going to make are Valor Awards, and they're kind of the highest level award that can be given out for lifesaving actions. So at this point, we'd like to present Deputy Chief Mike Gallagher Jr. and Battalion Chief Chris Gallagher with Valor Awards for their lifesaving actions that evening. Michael and Christopher arrived on the apparatus and were assigned search of the first floor where they came upon a victim collapsed on the floor in the first-floor lobby. They devised a plan, removed the victim to safety, and at that point, she was transported to the hospital in serious condition. There's no doubt that if these two didn't put their training and skills into action that evening, the outcome would have been absolutely worse. So these two gentlemen are going to get something a little bit different, and I'll just read... I'll read one, but they're both the same. Whereas on February 22nd, 2025, at 1:37 hours, the Bridgeport Fire Department, along with mutual aid fire companies, were dispatched to the Bridgeport Suites for a building fire. Deputy Chief Michael Gallagher and Battalion Chief Christopher Gallagher responded as part of a crew of Engine 54. Whereas upon the arrival, they were assigned search and rescue of the first floor of the structure. Upon entering the structure, they came upon a victim located in the first floor with life-threatening injuries. Deputy Chief Michael Gallagher and Battalion Chief Christopher Gallagher immediately devised and quickly implemented a plan to remove the resident from the structure. Whereas, the firefighters' immediate action saved the life of the victim. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Deputy Chief Michael Gallagher and Battalion Chief Christopher Gallagher be recognized for their quick response and professional actions for the lifesaving actions presented this 13th day of May 2025 by the Bridgeport Fire Department. So... Gentlemen? What's that? Like to thank council for taking a good half hour of their meeting tonight for allowing us to make these presentations publicly.
That's the least we can do. Thank you, Steve. I definitely want to echo everything that you said. We're incredibly fortunate to have such selfish individuals in our communities, and I want to recognize as well that you guys and girls don't always only show up in emergencies. You show up for the community day in and day out. So I want to personally thank you for giving my kids someone to look up to and for being heroes for all of our kids to look up to. I know that it means so much to the kids, and thank you for all your selfless acts and sacrifices. We don't thank you enough. So thanks for coming out and we appreciate your time, and that's the least we can do. And one more thank you to all recipients.
Thank you.
Although we have an exciting agenda coming up, you're welcome to call in tonight. Thank you, everyone, again.
That's some good fathering, Mike.
Didn't start with Mike, it started with George. I grew up in that building, right?
Joey. Joey, you look good.
All right, well, thank you for our robust crowd that remains. Pardon me, President Al-Zayed. I didn't mean to commandeer anything. I just wanted to say I believe that Vice President Heil had something to share with the rest of the audience this evening.
And I'm sorry that there wasn't as much of an audience for this, but something I've been thinking about for a while. And first of all, this past weekend, obviously, was Mother's Day, and I want to thank and congratulate the mothers who are here on our council and have served our community. And I also was thinking about how now, for probably the first time in our history being on council, we have a majority female council, and next council actually will probably be majority mothers, which does not happen in most legislatures or legislative bodies. And in that, I was also considering about how great it is to recognize our moms, but that oftentimes, we think about moms as that's their accomplishment in life, and all of the women here, whether they're moms or moms-to-be, have accomplished so much on their own, and they deserve to be recognized for that. And that includes someone who I think deserves some recognition tonight, someone who has decided not to be on the ballot again this year, and that is my friend Mayor Beth Jackseer. I don't know, can I read off of that? I don't know what's going to be on there. So I didn't know when or how I'd get a chance to recognize Beth because, obviously, not running again, you might come back for a plaque in January, or maybe you don't want to, but I thought it was deserving to recognize our mayor, given this timing with everything going on in our borough and the things happening in the next few months. So I'm offering up a proclamation by the Borough of Bridgeport recognizing Mayor Beth Jackseer, whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer began her public service in Bridgeport by successfully advocating for the creation of a little library for the Bridgeport Community Fund, and she has continued to support literacy for residents of all ages. And whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer represented Ward One as a member of Bridgeport Borough Council promoting fairness and inclusivity for all. And whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer was unafraid to speak her mind and spoke from the heart in the face of challenges from any party or group. And whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer was elected mayor in 2021 after knocking on hundreds of doors to introduce herself to residents and hear their concerns. Whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer used her time as mayor to build positive relationships between the police department and residents, and she created or grew important events such as Founder's Day. And whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer effectively sought grants to reduce speeding and assist our police department in countless ways. And whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer has made it clear that it is her intention to continue to remain engaged in promoting the borough. And whereas Mayor Beth Jackseer's positive influence will continue to be felt through her legacy and by the continuation of events, public safety initiatives, and literacy efforts. Therefore, be it resolved that Bridgeport Borough Council establishes May 13th, 2025, as Mayor Beth Jackseer Day to recognize and thank Mayor Jackseer for her tireless public service. So I'm introducing this, and hopefully someone will second and agree.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I hope not.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Is this... Are we going to do a gender reveal at council meeting? Mayor, Mayor Beth? Gender reveal?
How we doing?
Dear Governor Shapiro, I'm writing to express my deepest concern and unwavering support in the aftermath of the recent deeply disturbing incidents at your residence. We were shocked and outraged to learn of the violence, violent act that threatened you, your family, and your home. An attack of this nature is not only a violation of your personal safety, but an assault on the principles of public service and the safety of all of our elected officials. Please know that our thoughts are with you and your wife Lori and your children and all those affected by this senseless act. We are profoundly grateful that no one was physically harmed and we commend the swift action of law enforcement in responding to this emergency. We stand in solidarity with you against all forms of violence and extremism. We condemn this act of arson in the strongest possible terms. We want to emphasize that we support you and we are praying for you. We recognize the immense challenges and responsibilities you bear as governor and we want to assure you that the people of Bridgeport stand with you. We offer our full support during this difficult time. And on April 30th, we received a response where the governor said Lori and I are overwhelmed by the prayers and messages of support that we've received from all across Pennsylvania. We have heard from so many caring individuals in the Commonwealth and across the country and I want you to know that your prayers lift us up. In this moment, we are choosing to see light and we appreciate the light that you have shined upon us. Rest assured, this will not deter me from doing my job. It's an honor to serve as the 40th governor of Pennsylvania and I will continue to work hard as your governor to deliver the real freedom and opportunity for every Pennsylvanian. We are also grateful to our state and local law enforcement and first responders who did an extraordinary job keeping our families safe and who run towards danger every day to protect our communities. The Pennsylvania State Police continue to lead the investigation and I'll keep the public updated. So just wanted to share that quick tidbit with everyone.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. All right, so we can move on to the next items we have here. Actually, one last item. We, our art program with the children's art, since I'm sure everyone has kind of seen the news about Tap House closing, we have received the art back and we'll be relocating it, so keep your eyes up online for us to kind of notify and give the next location of where we will be putting that art up. And we can move on to the next item here. For council consideration, we have a request from Bridgeport Fire Company Number One to use the Borough Hall parking lot during their flea market event on May 17, 2025, which I hope everyone attends.
Move or approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Schenk, a second from Ms. Gundry. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries.
Chief Wanzek, can you come up for your picture for that?[726.63][726.63][laughter]
Alrighty, we can move on to our engineering section. We have first up here, zoning hearing notice 127 West Front Street, May 21, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Is this just?
This, the zoning hearing notices, President Alzada typically where we delve into the application packet, we would ask first if the applicants are present. Knowing the applicants, I can see that they are not. I would ask, if you don't mind, President Alzada, if BCO Wanzek would come forward to field any questions, should council have them? Fortuitous that we had a fire event here tonight and we also have some zoning questions.
I'll change hats.
Yeah, Mr. Wanzek, maybe just state your, whether you think it's a good, bad idea or in the middle and then maybe some background on it if you'd like.
I don't know if everybody's familiar with, so we have the pub on the first floor, we have a couple, we have the Feen Coffee Shop on the first floor and then the bike shop and then this would be the second, half of the second and the top of the third floor. They want to open up a batting clinic and part of their application is a special exemption to the zoning ordinance where they would, I'm sorry, I didn't want to touch it.[821.88][821.88][laughter] Where there's a section in our zoning code that allows, if there's different times for uses and at staff level, we felt that it was, it did meet that requirement where the batting cages are mostly done on the weekend mornings and in the afternoons where the brew pub is in the afternoon. The only thing that was discussed at staff level is if council sends somebody to the zoning hearing board in favor, not in favor, or no comment at all, we would ask that some of the things be considered is that the, they are proposing to add parking spaces on the front street side of the property, which is considered 127 West Front Street. I didn't bring my papers, I left them over there. That the parking lot, when it is completed as part of this, that's the part of the proposals they would complete that lot, that it meets the Borough Saldau ordinance. I don't know if we can make that a requirement at the zoning hearing board. Right now it's stone, it would need to, it would need to be paved, it would need to be striped properly, a proper ADA parking spot. There's an overseas container that's in that, in that lot that would impede in the parking area, so that would definitely have to be removed along with two unlicensed vehicles. We'd ask that they be removed. And then if any new tenants, because it's a special exception, any new tenant, since they are maxed out with their parking right now, would be required to come in front of the zoning hearing board for additional, additional parking or relief. So that's what we discussed at staff level. I don't know if Mr. Bello has any comment from a legal standpoint or not.
First, yeah, I think you summed it up pretty well, Mr. Wanzek. The question I had, the 10 spaces, are they on a different deed than the applicant itself? You said that the 10 spaces that are being paved, that were asked to be paved. Is it all the same deed or is there two separate deeds?
It's on the same deed, but just use two different addresses.
Okay, that's why I wanted to be sure, because we would need a lease if there wasn't, right? So other than that, I don't have any comments until council has an opportunity to opine.
I was, we've been talking in the planning meetings with you, Mr. Wanzek, and Roger and Keith and council members, Gundry and Schenk, about opportunities of parking where there's like a night and day, where like maybe these 10 spots are used at a bar at night and then during the day, there's some other activity that isn't going to be needing those spaces later. So this seems like the perfect opportunity for that kind of activity, so the space is used. Now, if we grant this and then it's changed in a few years, like they move over to some other owner, is that going to have any problem in the future, Roger or Steve?
That's what I was saying, if they get a different, different, different use in there, if this, if the gentleman that's running the batting cages is a manager for the Kansas City Royals Single A team, so most of his stuff is done prior to the season. But that's one of the concerns we had here at staff level, if we, if the relief is granted, the special exception is granted, does the applicant keep that right to those parking spaces or that relief with a different type of use?
And it's complicated. Any relief runs with the land, so that's the first general rule. The secondary issue is, would the second subsequent use be identical to the baseball use or would it be some derivation or some completely different use? So to the extent that we can get the applicant to agree at the ZHB, in other words, if we're inclined to grant this application, would you accept as a condition that any future user has to come back before the zoning board for use approval as well as the number of space attendant to that use? If they would agree to that, then you know, you have a contractual claim. So it's really a question of what the applicant will agree to, but whatever relief is granted runs with the land.
But if they're not here, we can't really ask them that question.
And that's, that's a reality, unfortunately.
That would have to be, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if we, if we were to say, hey, that's something we think is plausible, we can recommend it because they'll have to be at the CHB hearing and they'll either agree to it there or not, right? I mean, the ZHB board, the zoning hearing board doesn't have to go with our recommendation. They're a separate entity.
Completely separate.
We can give our, we can give our opinion tonight and I would be in favor of doing that. And if it, if they, if the applicant shows up at the hearing and that doesn't work for them, well, that's, that's on them to figure out at that hearing.
I mean, because there's a significant amount of parking that will be intended to that square footage and use, so I mean, it's a lot. But given, given the exception, the way the special exception language is written with the different times of day being the maximum likely usage, I can see why this would be something the borough would be behind. However, it's potentially an issue going forward, so the borough, if the borough backs this, I'm sure they're going to want significant conditions as well as the conditions that you already made reference to.
Now, obviously, we only have the ability to support, deny, or take no action. If they're not here, I don't really feel comfortable supporting because they can't answer those questions. But can we give notes to the ZHB and take no action? Can we say, you know, these are things we want you to keep in mind?
Well, certainly, Steve will be there on behalf of the borough and, you know, you guys can send me or someone from my office to attend the hearing to ask those questions as well. It's up to you.
I mean, I would, if it's, if it's, as we have described and this council were to, were to wish to support this and we can describe these conditions, we can send that recommendation as a, we support it with these conditions at the, at the meeting. And then if, you know, at the meeting, the applicant says, no, I can't do that, well, they can either negotiate down what that, what those conditions are to get the agreement from the zoning hearing board, or they can agree to what council has provided or what council has, so I guess what I'm saying is if we support this with the conditions that we are discussing, we should support it with the conditions we're discussing. If we choose to take no action, we should take no action.
It would be, initially, there'd be a letter from my office saying, the Borough Council supports this application, but only with the following conditions. And then the ZHB would be left to their own devices to see whether they thought it had merit or not, but they would certainly know what council's position was.
I don't, I don't want to send the message to the ZHB that we're ambivalent if we actually support it, given the conditions that we're discussing, because it is space that will become disused if it, if there is no approval for the use and if this is one of the better uses we think we'll see out there on the market. We should support it, given the conditions that we discuss here tonight.
And given the size of the space, any other use, or most other uses, I should say, would be far more intense as far as parking goes. So, you know, with the batting cages, they take up a significant amount of space and you could only have one person hitting at a time, right? So, for example, if it were a continuation of the brew pub, you could fit countless seats in there and with seats come cars. So if the, if the borough is inclined to support the application, that would be the justification because it's an extremely low-impact use as far as the parking goes.
And did you, Mr. Wanzek, did you mention there is verbiage in our zoning code regarding, I don't know how we, how we described it, that morning use and evening use, there, we have verbiage in the code? That means, I mean, that's defensible to me then, okay.
Yes.
And that's, that's what the special exception is for, is for the shared parking. Just for council's benefit, the re, the batting cages under the current code would require 56 spaces additional to what's there. And I don't know that they need 56 spaces like we discussed with the shared parking, but they're, they're providing 10, I believe.
Just a point of clarification, there, while there are batting cages at this site, it's far, it's far more of a, you know, a baseball clinic. It's, and, and Mr. Wanzek, this does fall under the purview of indoor recreation, does it not?
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's not a, you know, a, I don't know, it's, it's, while it's classified as that, it's more similar to a martial arts dojo or somewhere, a clinic where you actually get trained.
Training. It's he trains more than, yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's not Freddie Hill.
Yeah, that's correct. He does one-on-one instructional, or he'll bring a team of a couple of kids in and do individual or small groups is what he's proposing.
It's not unlike what, what they had at the CrossFit location before it was CrossFit.
Mm-hmm, correct, correct.
It was the exact same thing. It was personal baseball training, you know, two, two guys that are well-accomplished in baseball. There used to be a guy who played in the pros that was there and you'd go in, you'd take pitching practice, batting practice, but it was one-on-one instruction and this is the same kind of concept.
So what are the, what are the conditions, the verbiage of the conditions we've discussed here so far?
I'm, President, or Mr., sorry, flashback. Mr. Schenk, give me a sec. Just, just a point of clarification, Mr. Wanzek, there, and, and, you know, you and I were privy to these conversations, but I just wanted to identify the fact that on Front Street, they do have that enclosed asphalted area that they are not proposing to utilize as, as parking as part of this project, right?
No, they are.
They, they are.
Yeah, that's the proposed area, the parking.
This is the addition, these are the additional spaces, okay. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
I don't think anyone's concern is with the baseball clinic, but if that business switches out with a different one, is there any future problems and we just want to prevent that? I think that's the biggest point.
So if I'm understanding correctly, if it's a change of use by code, then they would have to come back in. That use, if it was, to say, a golf clinic, which would fall into the same type of use, they'd be grand, I don't say grandfather, but they would, they'd be entitled to that relief. Where if somebody moved in and built widgets, it's a different use and that would require the change.
That's correct. The use, this baseball use requires the 50 sub-spaces that we're, we're reducing it to 10 because they're sharing the balance of the parking lot. But anybody else who came in with a completely different use, they'd have to come back before the ZHB. The, the interesting thing, though, is what if it's another recreational, indoor recreational use that requires more parking? Then it gets more hairy, but I would argue that they still have to come back before the ZHB if it's an agreed-upon condition. Okay.
What exactly is an agreed-upon condition? That they have to come back?
They have to, any future user can't, can't, unless they're a baseball use, unless they're an identical use to the, to the, this particular use, they'd have to come back to the ZHB for additional relief.
I would, I would say that you would tie that special exception to that, where the special exception would expire should that, that business move out and a new use come in.
So we're gonna, we can say not just that it's a recreation, but it's a baseball use?
That's what we're going to say. Anybody can agree to anything at a hearing, so we're going to ask them to agree to it and if they won't agree to it, then I think that would be unreasonable and council would have
He does one-on-one instructional or he'll bring a team of, of a couple of kids in and do individual or small groups is what he's proposing.
It's not unlike what, what they had at the CrossFit location before it was CrossFit.
Mm-hmm, correct, correct.
It was personal baseball training. You know, two, two guys that are well-accomplished in baseball. There used to be a guy who played in the pros that was there and you'd go in, you'd take pitching practice, batting practice, but it was one-on-one instruction. And this is the same kind of concept.
So what are the, what are the conditions? The verbiage of the conditions we've discussed here so far?
I'm, I'm, President, or Mr., sorry, flashback. Mr. Schenck, give me a sec. Just, just a point of clarification, Mr. Wanzik. There, and, and you know, you and I were, were privy to these conversations, but I just wanted to identify the fact that on Front Street, they do have that enclosed asphalted area that they are not proposing to utilize as, as parking as part of this project, right?
No, they are.
They, they are.
Yeah, that's the proposed area, the parking.
This is the addition, these are the additional spaces. Okay, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
I don't think anyone's concern is with the baseball clinic, but if that business switches out with a different one, is there any future problems? And we just want to prevent that. I think that's the biggest point.
So if I'm understanding correctly, if it's a change of use by code, then they would have to come back in. That use, if it was to say a golf clinic, which would fall into the same type of use, they'd be grand, I don't say grandfather, but they would, they'd be entitled to that relief. Where if somebody moved in and build widgets, it's a different use and that would require the change.
That's correct. The use, this baseball use requires the 50 sub-spaces that we're getting, we're reducing it to 10 because they're sharing the balance of the parking lot. But anybody else who came in with a completely different use, they'd have to come back before the ZHB. The, the interesting thing though is what if it's another recreational, indoor recreational use that requires more parking? Then it gets more hairy, but I would argue that they still have to come back before the ZHB if it's an agreed upon condition.
What exactly is an agreed upon condition? That they have to come back?
They have to come, any future user can't, can't, unless they're a baseball use, unless they're an identical use to the, to the, this particular use, they'd have to come back to the ZHB for additional relief.
I would, I would say that you would tie that special exception to that where the special exception would expire should that, that business move out and a new use come in.
So we're going to, we can say not just that it's a recreation, but it's a baseball use?
That's what we're going to say. Anybody can agree to anything at a hearing. So we're going to ask them to agree to it. And if they won't agree to it, then I think that would be unreasonable and council would have reason to oppose it.
And then in that case, it might make sense to make the motion to support with that condition so it's out there. And that's a reasonable thing because that's what they want to do anyway. And then come back to us if there's any change, so.
Does anyone have any questions additional?
I would like, just to, in addition to that condition, I'd like to delineate or for the record, the other conditions that Mr. Wanzik had, had recommended, if, if it pleases council. Number one, that the proposed parking lot at 127 West Front be built to meet the Borough subdivision and land development ordinance, i.e. it must be, it must be paved. Is there a portion that is currently unpaved, Steve?
Seventy-five percent of it's unpaved. It's just stone.
It's stoned. Number two, that the overseas container is removed from the proposed parking lot at 127 West Front. Number three, that any unlicensed vehicles or abandoned vehicles, for lack of, or I guess more expansive term, in the proposed parking lot at 127 West Front be removed. Number four, that any new tenant must seek zoning relief for parking. And number five, that any disabled parking spaces meet ADA requirements.
Given that information, do we have a motion in favor to support contingent upon the recommended conditions that are accepted and that we discussed tonight?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Schenck, a second from Ms. Howk. Do we have any other questions or comments from council or the public?
And that's going to include the mention of the baseball use then?
Right.
For, that would make a total of six, six conditions. That hearing is next Wednesday, if anyone wants to attend at seven o'clock.
Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, we have a motion to support. Thank you. We can move on to the next zoning hearing notice, 425 Ford Street, May 21st, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We can definitely open the floor to discuss that. Mr. Truman?
B.C. Wanzik, could you please approach the podium?
What's that? You want a picture?
You've been standing since like 7:30, I'm pretty sure. All right.
I, go ahead Keith. Mr. Truman. Would, would you like to provide a summary of what this applicant, what this applicant currently has at the 425 Ford is, is the old brassers or Carl's upholstery? What is there currently and what are they proposing?
Currently, the property is empty. It's been empty for about three years. Prior to that, it was Carl's upholstery, right there on Ford Street. It was a single-use facility. He is proposing two separate uses. One is the sleep center and the other is, I believe, two apartments. He's made a couple of changes along the way and I put my stuff back in the, in my office, but it's.
A sleep center, a restaurant and a, and a two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartment, is that correct?
From what I remember. I don't have, do you have it, Roger? I have to walk back to my office.
Yeah, I have it. That's correct. They're, they're looking at a sleep center, a restaurant in the front and two apartments, a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom apartment.
Since the applicant's not here, I, this time I don't feel comfortable with supporting outright because they can't answer some questions about the parking situation and the usage. And I, just one add, in our conversations in the planning committee with Mr. Wanzik and Mr. Phillips, we have discussed improving the process of seeing these applications in the future so that we can see them with more time ahead of time and council members will be able to see some easier question and answer about some of these properties so that they'll be able to, well, the future councils will be able to more intelligently respond and, and help you out. But I think we have a lot of questions that they're not able to answer because they're not here.
Sure, for the, specifically the, the relief they're looking for is for the use of the sleep study clinic on the first floor. They also are required to have 21 parking spaces under what they're proposing and they have zero and they have room to put zero on that property. And I believe they also, we've added to that, they haven't requested it, but we believe that they need additional relief for the size of the apartments that they're trying to put in there.
I'm inclined to provide that relief at this time without an explanation of how they can do it. And if they think that their tenants or they're the people who are going to be using the property are able to navigate that, I would at this time take no action because maybe they can answer those questions. But I, I don't feel comfortable approving it this time.
So we would, motion to?
Do we have any additional questions or comments first before we move on to motion? I would say that we welcome new businesses and I'm excited that someone wants to move into the space. So I definitely would encourage them to come by and chat with us and give us some more information. I think that we are all really inclined to help work with new businesses when they're coming into town and just, we have, as, as Mr. Howk said, we have a lot of questions that I would love to get answered beforehand. So do we have a motion to kind of stay neutral?
I'll make a motion to take no action.
No action.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to take no action from Mr. Howk. We have a second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All right, all those in favor to not take any action?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have no action.
Mr. Wanzik, it may be sensible to suggest to council for this applicant to ask for a continuance perhaps and come before council because, you know, he, he may want council's support. And if, and if he doesn't care, then that's fine, but it would give him the opportunity to have council opine on whether they think this could be worked out in some way or, or not. But right now, the, the, the ZHB hearing is scheduled before our next hearing. So if, so if we don't, if he doesn't ask for a continuance, we're not going to have an opportunity to weigh in, which is fine as long as he's fine, but you, you may want to give him that opportunity.
We, he has continued, he had, he had granted us an extension. The original application was April the 27th, I believe, and they, they gave an extension until May the 31st. But I will reach out to him tomorrow and have some discussion and, and come back and if we need to continue it or ask for an extension, we'll have him decide. We won't ask for it. We'll, we'll allow him after discussion if he so chooses. If not, we'll run it through ZHB and see where it ends up. Okay?
And before you leave, the next items are about the fire department. So you might not want to leave. Just letting you know for your own knees and safety.
All right, I'm good.
In the, in the interest of that, the, the next couple of items on these purchases, are we able to do those, consider those as one item? The authorization's the purchase? Just?
I mean, they're, they're, they're three separate vendors.
All right, no sweat.
So the three items that we're asking for were all part of the capital request that we had last year. One's a gear extractor. I think we discussed that at the budget meeting or Mr. Truman did. One is a gear dryer, which once we wash the gear, we, we dry it. We do wash our gear after, after any major incident or anytime we've been in smoke. And the, the other item, believe it or not, is one of the items, one of the, one of the tools that they use down at the towers, these thermal imaging cameras. We have, we currently have them, they're, they're 10 years old and the technology's advanced and we can win a smoky room, smoke-filled room, and it just picks up heat. It'll pick up the fire, let alone people. So there, there are a couple of important tools that we're requesting.
So just for the record, Chief Wanzik, you're, you're saying that after you wash the uniforms, you generally dry them?
Most of the time.
All right.
That's, that's sound advice.
Can't you just, can't you just hang them all in the backyard like when you were a kid in Bridgeport?
We, we, we will. I mean, if that's what it takes. I'm going to bust out in a, in an Elvis song in a minute for Mr. Bello.
I think we've had you here talking for over an hour, so I'll make this quick for you.
Thank you.
All right, for council consideration, we have authorization of capital purchase, fire department, thermal imaging unit, Whitmer Public Safety Group for $10,114. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Howk, second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Next up for council consideration, we have authorization of capital purchase for fire department, industrial extractor, Three Rivers Fire Equiments for $8,744. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Nolan, second from Ms. Howk. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Finally, up here for council consideration, we have authorization of capital purchase for the fire department, industrial dryer, fire and rescue products, $9,595. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Gundrum, second from Ms. Howk. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wanzik, for sticking around tonight. You have a safe ride home. Thank you, Kenny. All right, next up for council consideration, we have resolution 2025-10, authorizing the purchase of a vacant property located at Front and Mill Street for $150,000. Do you have a motion? Or Mr. Truman, I don't know if you want to give some context? We're good.
It's a, it's a vacant lot located at the, at the corner. I, I know, no, I'm not, I'm not being.
Sometimes you have details.
It's, it's a vacant property located at Front and Mill. We would be purchasing it for $150,000. I think that doing so allows us, for just the opportunity for potentially a beautification project on the, the gateway or approach to the new riverfront development, at least on that corridor going in and out.
Is this FEMA money? I forget. FEMA-related? Is this FEMA-related? I forget.
This would not be FEMA-related.
Councilwoman Gundrum just mentioned that this is where the fire department used to dry their uniforms before we approved for the dryer and so it's, it's appropriate.
Thank you for that historic moment. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Schenck, a second from Ms. Howk. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public outside of hanging them into dry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. All right, we can move on to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business? Seeing there are none, we can move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
I will speak for the community events committee. We met last week here at Borough Hall and discussed the carnival as well as the family movie nights. The first family movie night will be happening this Saturday right here in the parking lot at Sunset. The movie we will be playing is Coco and we'll also have some popcorn, so I hope everyone can make it out.
Moana 2.
Oh, oops, sorry. I'm sorry, it's Moana 2.
Still very good.
Maybe we'll do that another week. And the carnival will be taking place here June 17th through the 21st. We are currently looking for volunteers to come out and help run some ticket sales. So if you know anybody that's interested, please let them know. And I look forward to seeing everyone at those events. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howk.
And I'll just jump in on the community events since I don't know where cleanup day falls anymore. But I just want to give a thank you to everyone who participated in our rescheduled, or I should say our rain date. When even was it? It was Saturday, May 3rd, we ended up having our community cleanup day. And even with it being a rain date, and I know, you know, people have lives, last-minute changes, we still had 20 volunteers who showed up. We collected 20-plus bags of trash and we also had assistance from, we had a cleanup crew with the Bridgeport Rib House, as they always bring their own people to assist with cleanup day. And also the Depot Bar organized their own advanced cleanup day before the original date of, end of April. And we also enjoyed a delicious lunch from the Bridgeport Rib House and Nana Rosa provided pizza. And Junebug Sweet Treats also offered anybody who participated in cleanup day to come by and enjoy a sweet treat on the house. So I thank everybody who came out and all of our businesses who were involved. And I just want to say something, just really quick, that it was, I thought it was really sweet this year that we had a couple of families that brought their children out to participate in cleanup day. And we did have one three-year-old who was just so excited to help his parents and pick up trash. And I know Ms. Alzade, you take your kids out on, on the walks and pick up nails and screws and all sorts of construction debris. And you have, it's really an art installation, all the pictures that you post of it. So I just really appreciate the parents around town who are getting their kids started young of just doing whatever they can to beautify their neighborhood and their community. So I just thank everybody who was involved this year.
Nolan, it's my favorite event and I think it's, you're absolutely done in such, such a nice way. We make friends there. It's like so much more than just cleanup. And I think that, you know, we, we walk around town for hours every day, at least one hour, and it's, it's always clean and immaculate. And I think it's as a due to the cleanup days that you've had. I've seen a change for sure since you've started them and we really thank you for all the organization that you, you've been, done, effort you've been. All right, any other committee reports? Just a quick Halloween Subcommittee report. We are meeting on Tuesday, the 20th from 6:30 to 7:30. Location TBD, we'll post it on Facebook. It's likely Junebug Suites and we're going to start painting and doing some more crafty things. So if you're interested in that kind of stuff, definitely pop in. We have about 12 to 15 people showing up to these meetings, which is another great opportunity to kind of meet some people and make some friends. They're very fun. Bring your kids, very, and you don't have to have attended ahead of time or before to join us. All right, if we don't have any other committee reports, we can move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack's here.
Thank you. Well, I guess if you want to get involved but don't like Halloween, you can always join the Founder's Day Committee because we will also be holding our next meeting on May 20th at 7:00 PM and that'll be right here at Borough Hall. And we're going to be, we're already planning for next year, so please feel free to join us. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the Bridgeport Police Department because from Thursday, May 15th through Wednesday, May 21st, we celebrate National Police Week. So please make sure to say hello and give thanks to our officers as you see them around the borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We can move on to the chief's report. Chief?
Good evening, Bridgeport. We supported for the sixth year in a row, the Race for Peace Event at the King of Prussia Mall. Race for Peace Against Violence, Gun Violence. We've been involved in that. It's a, it's a cold world, lots of bad things are going on, but it, it humanizes police officers and what we do, how we do it with the public we serve, and that's a good thing. So thank Officer Stead for being involved with that. Just to, you know, because I pay attention to social media, I know some of the concerns over motorcycles and ATVs that, that have a tendency to roar through town occasionally. So we had two incidents in the last week and we stopped, seized one motorcycle, one of two the one time, and we got one of two yesterday, I guess it was. So, so people will get to know not to do it here. So otherwise they'll lose their motorcycles and have to, they'll be forfeited. So you learn one way or learn the other, but not here. We don't need our public or people concerned with their children being on sidewalks or people racing around on streets. So that'll send a strong message out. I met with the new superintendent of Upper Marine School District along with the chief of Upper Marine PD and West Country PD in a Zoom meeting, just talking about mutual cooperation and also brought up something that came up three years ago about the school bus program, whereas they have cameras in the school buses, so people try to stop or drive past a school bus. We can participate in that program mutually. It will issue violations to, to, to folks and some of that money will flow back into the school district and to the borough. We're going to be doing an, an in-person meeting to follow up on that. And my hopes are is that maybe next, next year we could have that in there. It'll greater provide security for our children because people will become even more greatly aware that, that, that everyone's, it's being watched. And if you, if you do take those kinds of risks, then there's a, a significant payment involved for that, if that's all you care about. Training, we've had a bunch of officers in training, crisis intervention specialists. I'm getting a lot of our police officers trained up in that. So it deals with de-escalation, it deals with how to deal with people differently. So we've had a bunch of people there going through that training. We also have accident reconstructionists. We also have accident reconstructionists, we haven't had someone with that skill here probably in 20 years, so we have two people being trained up for that right now, as well as on-scene accident, so that all of our officers that are on patrol will have a better capability and competency to deal with accidents, because they happen all the time, unfortunately. So, we want to make sure we're doing a better job. We, we assisted with retired Bridgeport Police Officer Michael Latanzi's funeral on May 1st. Mike was a 25-year veteran of the, the Police Department, and we provided honor guard and, and an honor guard at the funeral site, so our best to the Latanzi family. Crime stats from April, we had 12 Part I crimes with 10 arrests, and Part II crimes, we had 11 Part II crimes with eight arrests, so it's a 78% closure rate by, by arrest, which is excellent. So, a lot of the crimes are being reported and break down to give you people, and give everyone an idea about what happens in, in Bridgeport and how we confront it. We had one burglary on East Front Street, we, we did not have suspects for that. We had four retail thefts with arrests from the Wawa, we had two DUIs with arrests, we had two trespassers with arrests, we had two resistors, people resisting arrest during the course of the arrest, they obviously went, they went to prison. We have a seatbelt initiative right now, we put it out on social media, it starts off with seatbelt, it's a paid, a regionalized, paid grant from the state, and officers are going to be out in the street between the 12th of May and the 1st of June, half of that time will be spent after hours, and will include DUI enforcement. And that's mostly what I have for you tonight, and as always, please call in, please email, please Facebook me, I know I get plenty of them, but we're always open to have that dialogue with issues. I see some of the issues and people ask about it, I try to get back on Facebook to, to address them, so it's a great dialogue, as long as we're speaking to each other, that's the most important thing, so thank you.
Seems like a really busy time, Chief, thanks for keeping us updated.
Chief, I have two quick things from what you're saying. One, I was talking to a couple people, fire officials actually, about the speeding on Ford Street, which I've brought up many times, and they mentioned about some emergency vehicles from outside of Bridgeport, like Upper Marion who's come through, or Norristown, that they clocked it going up to 70 miles an hour on the Ford Street, so if you're talking with your other counterparts in the area that go through Bridgeport, please let them know they're a young kid, it doesn't even matter if they're young, but there are people on Ford Street who see these cars going so fast down that hill, and to beware of their speed. And then the other issue, we were talking about the seatbelt law, also, I know my friend, Paul and Eileen Miller, there's Paul Miller's Law about texting and driving going into effect in June, so please alert people about that, that, to be sure about hands-free driving in the area, so that'll be on the lookout from state and local police as well.
Absolutely, and we're going to start, start our cooperation or cooperative with the state police again, where we did radar decals with the local state police barracks, so you can expect to see state trooper cars also working on that stuff. More recently, you're going to see people working on intersections for people going through stop signs and red lights, so our enforcement numbers are up with stops, and that's what I want to see, as the weather gets better and more people are out there, so you should see some traffic enforcement and speed enforcement to come, Mr. Hile.
Thank you, Chief.
We can move on to new business, are there any items of new business to discuss? All right, seeing there's none, we have open forum and announcements, does anyone have any announcements tonight? All right, we can move on to public comment, are there any members of the public that would wish to comment this evening? Wonderful, we can certainly entertain a meeting, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
It is 8:49, we are adjourned, thank you.